You can see them. Eagle Scout things.
Here you want to go?
Yeah, I got it. Yes.
We're good. Good evening, everyone. This is the Stowe Select Board meeting of May 10th, 2022. Before I ask for public comment, just be aware Stowe TV is recording this entire proceeding. And we are now aboard of four, so all members are and the board are present today, yay. And if votes are unanimous, I will not request a roll call. Public comment, please limit your remarks to under two minutes, identify yourself and your address. Mr. Burke?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Brian Burke, 125 Birch Hill Road in Stowe. And unlike a lot of public comments that I have seen at the start of selectmen's meetings, or select board meetings, I rise today to laud the current iteration of the board for adopting a civility code of conduct. For over six years, I was a member of this board, one of them as chair. And through that entire time, I was subject to unrelenting and unremitting humiliation. There were members of this board who I will not name, although their names dearly deserve to be called out, who would joke and poke fun at my expense.
You were jokes.
Madam Chair, do I have the floor?
Yes, Mr. Burke, please continue.
This is what I'm talking about. Sorry. The, virtually every issue that came before us, there were, these members would poke fun at me, jest at me, and what is worse, they made it seem like I was the joker, that I was making fun of the serious matters that affected our community. Never a meeting went by without some joke at my expense. I was even called by these members, selectman Schecky, after the late, selectman Schecky Green. Every meeting after meeting after meeting, I was made to look utterly foolish. And I would go home at night after the meetings, and I would talk to my wife. And I would ask her, why? Why do my colleagues want me to look so foolish? I'm sorry, I promised myself I wouldn't cry. Suffice it to say, that at, as a result of this ribald Jake Nybergery, I found that my service to the town on this board was made immensely difficult and emotionally traumatic. So I am gratified that the board has adopted this civility code of conduct. I'd like to think that if I had, we had this in place when I served on this board, that perhaps the ridicule would have abated or moderated to some extent. But I am so glad, so glad, that no Stowe Select Board member in the future will ever be subject to public ridicule and to be humiliated on an ongoing basis. Thank you for adopting the code. I get the opportunity to respond.
Is there anyone else on the, I don't have my screen up, I can't see.
Alex, that's his hand raised.
Yes, Alex.
Yes, hello, my name is Alex Riker, I live at 24 Asawitown Way here in Stowe. I am running for one of the open seats on the select board. And I too want to allow the, the board and, you know, congratulate you all. It seems as though the master's agreement will be signed today, and I believe this is a huge step forward for our town. And I look forward to working with everybody, and I think that when you look at other schools in the area who have similar missions, the ones that have been most successful are in towns in which the integration between the, between the school and the community is very strong. I have a number of friends who went to Lawrence Academy. The, the community around Lawrence Academy is very strong and lifts up the athletes and the students that go there. I look forward to hopefully being able to, being able to work with the, the board, work with the Masters Academy to provide a strong community so that we can build up those students that are going to the school. As the Bruins game starts, you know, it's, it's just reminding me, you know, these, these guys, Chris, Chris and team, you know, Chris and Peter and the team, they have a strong vision. There will be future NHL players, future NBA players, future leaders of industry coming to the Masters Academy. And I think that it would be wise for our town to come together and really rise up and be able to, be able to support these students that are going to be coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Yep, hello?
Hi!
Hi, I know, hi. Hey, it's Ann Needle at the Stowe Independent. Quick question, I hope it's a quick question, and you may end up answering it later during the, the academy discussion, but I looked, I was reading today a notice, public notice about very high PFAS levels being found on the Bose property. Like, I guess the site was classified as tier one. So, and that, but that Bose is in charge of remediation, which I take it to mean they are going to pay for it, let's hope. But my question then is, yeah, anybody have any idea what the PPT reading was? And is this going to impact the academy's plans or its schedules? And what about the well, the local wells? Who does the remediation on that? So, mouthful, but there you go.
We will bring that up at the, when we're talking about the Masters Academy.
Okay, I just wanted to log my questions beforehand, so there you go.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Anyone else have public comment? Okay, just a few announcements, obviously town meeting is this Saturday. We'll be talking about that more later in the meeting, but it does start at 9:00 AM at Hale School. Town election the following Saturday, 10:00 to 4:00 at Center School. And last announcement for me is Spring Fest is back, which I am personally excited as a former committee member. I think Megan also did a round with Spring Fest, right?
Just as a volunteer, yeah.
Yeah, so June 4th at Center School. And I did notice they are selling some cool merchandise if you want to support their efforts. I believe it's on their website, I don't know if there's, I meant to check if there's a link from our website, but if you, if you Google Stowe Spring Fest, you will see their ad. They have t-shirts and hats and that sort of thing. So, thank you to the team that's working on it, and I look forward to it. So, anybody else's announcements?
Yes, I do. I didn't want this evening to go by without saying.
I was under recognition.
Oh, sorry!
But I'll let you go as soon as Courtney has an announcement, then we'll.
Do you have an announcement, other than my announcement? That's the same announcement?
Nope. So I had a chance to talk with the, so following up on a question in, or a letter in correspondence a couple of weeks ago, and also an email that I received was inquiry about the geese that were found in the river. And so I had a brief chat with the animal control officer. That was referred to the Department of Fish and Wildlife because they were way out in the river. Shore, and also that's, apparently that's their permit. So she said there have not been any further accounts of geese or other birds that have had A D and flu in Stowe or in the region. That any number of things could have happened to those geese. Including that some people don't like geese and could have done something malicious. So you could have eaten something that was on somebody's lawn that was fertilizer. So apparently we are currently in good shape for not having any sort of.
Thank you for calling. I was gonna kick off, but Megan, you can keep on.
I just, I wanted to recognize Jim Salvey for all of his, is it 11 or 12 years? 12 years on the board. He will be leaving us on the board, but will be the new town moderator, which will be great. Personally, Jim and I met doing the lower village revitalization subcommittee, and I think we banged heads right away. And I just wanted to say, I have valued the time that we have spent together on these boards. I feel like I have learned so much from you. And we don't agree on everything, but we can at least have a good conversation. And I think that's so important in, in being on these boards is to really get differences of opinion, but really working that for a common solution. So I'll miss you, and I'll miss being able to talk to you about all the new Pooherseltzer flavors. I'll keep letting you know when they're out. I know, you're all going that far.
So I wrote something down because I'm not good at spontaneity. So, yeah, Jim has served on the board since 2010 and served as chair three of those years, which I have new appreciation for, I have to say. In addition to bringing his knowledge and skills as a public sector attorney, he also served on the finance committee. During his tenure on the select board, he was a huge advocate for track road in particular and the complete streets initiative generally. He guided the board to make community center Pompo a reality. He served during the transitions of police and fire chief, and most important, perhaps, the town administrator. And I, my personal appreciation was the role he played in the, what I call the dark days of the arrest of our former police chief. You were the face of the town during a rough few we, rough, maybe you understated, few weeks, and saw through it, saw us all through it with what I would consider rare dignity and honesty that made us proud. So thanks for all you've done for Stowe, and I'm really looking forward to seeing you next year as moderator.
Very much appreciate that. Can I say a few words?
Yes.
I'll just say extemporaneously that I've really enjoyed being on the board with you, Jim. And I came on when you were chair, I believe, and you mentored me. And I really appreciated the guidance and just any kindness that you, I thought you gave me as just pointing things out or steering me a little bit in the ways of boardness. So thank you for all your service, not just in my experience, but over all the years. And I will continue to respect and look up to you as a person who seems to have wise things to say in a deliberate and considered fashion.
Well, that's quite a bit, and I don't know how to respond to all of that. Thank you very much, all of you. I, it's been a great 12 years. I, you know, there've been some decisions in my life where I've done something and said, oh, God, why did I do that? Running for this board was not one of those things. I was so glad I did it from the first day through to today. Served with some tremendous people, different kind of personalities and outlooks. I think I got along with just about everyone, I've made some very good friends, as you saw. Who I intend to keep as friends beyond my tenure here on this board. I have to say, because she mentioned it, Megan, I have so much joy. I enjoyed our butting heads frankly, because I just get into that kind of thing. But then I really enjoyed watching the evolution of your thinking, and then also noticing the evolution of my own thinking. When you would say something, they would be like, oh, okay, she's got a point. You know, and I really kind of liked that, that sort of thing. I've enjoyed working with all of you, I've enjoyed working with everyone. I'm trying to think, that's a big statement. I just want to say one thing, really, to anybody who's watching this. It is so easy to get involved in this town government, this, you know, you'll hear every once in a while, or we use the old boys network, the close. It's really not true, it's easy to get involved in that. Now, you know, not everyone's going to listen to you from day one and just do everything you say. And part of being on a five-member board is getting used to that. But give it a shot, you know, I, it helped me really put roots down in this town. I don't mean getting on select, which I started on ThinkCom. Did you really develop a good sense of community and what makes this place tick? My only other comment is, I think, I have always realized, but I really realized recently, our biggest jewel in this town are our town employees who really, really work hard to do their best job possible. And by and large, truly, truly care about what they do. And I am so grateful for that. And I'm grateful to all of you, and I'm grateful to Denise, one of the best decisions I participated in. Happy to say, could have so easily gone so wrong. I'm proud of something, and maybe more importantly, I can't think of anything that I'm ashamed of. So maybe that's a good thing. Thank you.
Well, we will miss you, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our next recognitions are for three amazing Eagle Scouts. The flow continues, the troop has been very busy, and a lot of these are delayed from the last couple of years have not been able to have courts of honor. So our first one is Christian L. I'll read the certificate of achievement we'll be handing to him. We're proud to have you as a member of our community and appreciate the service project you completed at Stowe Community Gardens in 2020. You coordinated with the Conservation Commission and Land Steward in designing and building a kiosk that faces the tunnel lane side of the gardens. The kiosk provides a general orientation to the area and a trail map that will be particularly useful once the trail leading back through the Cuneles parcel to the Red Acre Woodlands is open. We wish you the best of luck in the future, sign this Stowe Select Board. And I will, let's see, are we gonna do, should we do, read them all and then make the motions? Thank you. The next one is Matthew Urban. Also proud to have you as a member of the community. Your service project was completed in 2020. You constructed a 30-foot boardwalk extension to an existing boardwalk on conservation land between Hale School and Center School, turning a wet and muddy area into a walkable path for the community. Also suitable for student athletes using the path for their training. We wish you the best of luck. And then last but not least, Liam Hall. Whose project was also in 2020 at Small Farm. The project involved designing and building a trailhead kiosk to serve as a focal point at the head of the conservation walking trail. The kiosk map shows Carver Hill and Small Farm in relation to nearby open space and depicts the short Small Farm trail loop in detail. So not only do we have these three amazing young men, but we have all this new information on our properties, especially on the conservation lands, which, since the chief is here, thank you again for being a great troop leader of this incredible troop one. We're really proud of all that you guys produce for our town, really quite impressive. So we have formal motions for the votes? Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I move to recognize Boy Scouts Christian L., Matthew Urban, and Liam Hall for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout and to sign the letters and proclamations that will be presented at the recognition ceremonies on Sunday, May 15, and Saturday, May 21st, 2022.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Again, congratulations to the three of you, and look forward to being at your Eagle Scout presentations. Okay, next is a promotion of, that I invite to Call Fire Lieutenant. We have Lieutenant Boyd here, and the chief is here. So chief, you want to say a few words, and then we'll look at it?
Yes, with the promotion of Barry Evers to captain, I've left a vacancy for a Call Lieutenant. The Call Lieutenant is assigned to groups to manage the members of the department as well as respond on rotation schedule at night. We conducted, gave them five weeks of study materials. They completed a written exam. On the completion of that, they participated in an oral exam. The four candidates that applied were very close and running. However, Ms. Boyd came out on top. He started with the department back in 1919, 2019 as a Call firefighter, went through our program. In his previous life, he was a police officer. So I think he saw the better side of being a firefighter. Mr. Boyd and his family do live in Stowe. He is, runs his own contracting business here in Stowe. And we feel as though that he would be a great asset to the department as well as the community of Stowe.
Terrific. And I'm glad to see you're here with your three girls and your wife. Thank you all for coming. You have anything you want to say to us or to the town?
No, just, you know, thank you and look forward to continue serving in a different capacity. Forward to it.
Yeah, it's very exciting. It's great to have continued growth of the department, it's really exciting. So with that, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board appoint Ryan Gilroy to the position of Call Fire Lieutenant through June 30th, 2022, and subject to reappointment thereafter.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you.
She might give me her phone so I can take a picture. I just like the mom in me. I was just wanting to climb over. It is what I do. Ready? I'm right here. I think we're missing one. Ready, one, two, three.
Congratulations, thank you. Thanks, girls, for coming. Have a good night.
Thank you. Steve in the board.
Thanks, chief. Next is Denise's report.
Yes. Couple things this evening, COVID cases, we have 30 cases in town at a 6.25% positivity rate. I would like to continue the sentiment of what great employees we have by acknowledging a few of them this evening. I want to recognize Police Prosecutor Luke DeZago for some excellent work while covering the dispatch when a suicide call came in. I want to recognize Detective Fitzpatrick and Officer Shampo for the work they did when responding to a mental health call. It really shows true professionalism and training, comes in very handy when dealing with sensitive subjects. So they've done a great job. I want to recognize Kathy Sfera for the work she did on the MVP grant application. It was submitted finally last week. And while a number of folks contributed different portions of the application, she did by far the lion's share of the 25-page application. And quite frankly, if we receive the million-dollar grant, it will solely be because of her efforts on that project. I want to thank Dolores Hamilton, our Assistant Town Administrator, for putting on a fantastic health fair for our employees last week. We had almost 50 employees show up, we partnered with Bolton, only six of their employees showed up. But we had all of our vendors, we had wellness opportunities there. It was really a great opportunity for the employees to get out and see what benefits we have. With that, I'd like to thank Jeff and Doug from the Facilities Department and all of the Council on Aging staff for all their help with setup and ancillary support. Obviously, the folks down at Pompo do a great job and are very well-equipped to do functions and events. So I thank all of them for their work. And I would like to thank the highway staff for doing such a great job beautifying the outside of our buildings. Here at the town building, they worked alongside our volunteer, Parra Barrows, and she's the one who planted all those beautiful flowers. And they just worked so hard for pretty much a full week out there doing the work. And now they've moved on to Pompo. So just to thank them and thank all of our employees for all the work that they do. I do want to clarify a statement that was in last week's Independent. I know it will be clarified this week, and there was a correction put online. But under the last paragraph of the town warrant highlight article, it stated that if town meeting does not pass the library article, the question will still appear on the ballot, but the votes will not count. That is inaccurate, those votes absolutely do count. And if the town meeting does not pass the question, but the ballot does, we would reconvene a special town meeting to ratify the town election results. So folks, still go out and vote how you wish to vote on the ballot, because every vote does count. I wanted to comment, the highway department and the police department have been receiving a large amount of feedback, both formal and informal, over the recent traffic safety measures that we've put around the community. These are in an attempt to calm traffic speeds and deal with other issues that are reported by the residents through our Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. I want to let folks know that the committee is doing their best to respond to all the concerns and address those they are able to. But quite frankly, people are not going to change their driving habits overnight. Putting up a speed limit sign does not mean people are going to drive slower. It is a work in progress, and we are continuing to find ways that we can to try and mitigate some of the speed concerns. Obviously, we put some delineators on Wheeler, and some people that live on that street love them, and the residents that like to drive fast down the street don't love them. So they did not last very long on Wheeler Road. But these are just different ways that we are trying to address the concerns. We receive significant number of concerns and complaints. I spoke to a person today that told me we don't care about Sudbury Road and how fast cars travel. I told them that was absolutely not correct, but I feel the same, we get the same calls on, you know, Wheeler and Great Road and South Act and West Act and, West Act and Gleeson Dale. And we just can't address every concern every minute of the day. We only have so many police, we only have so many highway folks. So we are doing the best we can with trying to take advantage of the ARPA funding, the Traffic Safety Committee, and we'll get there slowly but surely. But I ask folks to just be patient and know that some of these are just a work in progress. What might work right on one street is not going to work on another street. And I know the question will continue to come up about speed bumps, and it's not something we're discounting, but it is very expensive. And we are, we will take that into consideration as part of that conversation. But it is very unlikely that we would install permanent speed bumps at a cost of $1,000 to $200,000 when you factor in drainage requirements and so on. So again, I just ask folks to be patient. We have a Traffic Safety Advisory Committee website. If you go to our page, you can lodge a complaint or a concern right on that page, and they are addressed. The minutes of the meeting are on there, a spreadsheet of the topics they've taken under are on there, and they are actively meeting on a monthly basis to address this. So. I also wanted to say that there have been a number of questions leading up to town meeting regarding the library renovation project. So in an effort to provide information, I did place a sort of question and answer on our website. It was also on our Facebook page, and I've asked the Independent to run it in this week's paper to clarify, you know, what, what happens if some, you know, how people vote. If town meeting votes one way, if the ballot votes another way. What it actually means to vote yes at the ballot, what it means if you vote no at the ballot, what the implications are. And then questions, there have been a lot of questions surrounding the project, and people don't like the way it looks in the pictures. It is a conceptual design right now, we are not, this is not what the building will look like. This is the size of the building, the square footage of the building, the shape of the building. But materials and how it will, the finished product will look, we have a year to go through the full design phase. So if it passes, there will be plenty of opportunity for public feedback. Quite frankly, if it passes, I will be asking this board to expand the building committee so that we can add folks on there that are concerned about what the project looks like. I want them, I challenge them, quite frankly, to be part of the process to bring to this community the vision that they think is right. So I would encourage anybody that if this passes and you're passionate about it, let's become part of the solution. So I, I would hope that if that time comes, we can figure out what the right number is for building committee. But I think that would be important to be more inclusive in that process. And those are everything I have under that for tonight.
Just on the topic of staff appreciation, one thing we never got around to saying, I think, is thanking Council on Aging for their amazing work during COVID, that their service to the seniors in this town were, I just thought extraordinary. So I'll just add that in on the list, because I think Gigi Ling is a particular. So I'll just add that in on the list, because I think Gigi Ling is a particular, and Allison is the leader of the team, just really made sure that there was always something going on for the seniors in a time where they were particularly isolated. So hopefully, that's coming slowing down, but you never know. We might be back there soon. But thank you. But I appreciate, now, I will second everything, all those amazing staff that are doing amazing work, including our town administrator. Yes.
They had something on the traffic there.
Yes.
Just because in two weeks. That's right. In two weeks, I probably lose my right to voice opinions.
Well, you can still have a lot of complaints on the website.
I was thinking about this, because speaking as a driver and cyclist, and I was thinking about this when I got cut off when I was on my bike by the, you know, 900th car. And I didn't hate those delineators. I didn't love them, but they did the job. I think the fundamental problem is that it's difficult to come up with an infrastructure solution to something that is fundamentally a behavior problem. And, you know, the behavior problem is on the part of both cyclists, the vulnerable users, I'll even say pedestrians for walking out like in the middle of the road, less than cyclists and drivers. You've got cyclists who, when they ride in a group, are just lollygagging two or three abreast. And I know that the law sometimes technically allows that, but who cares? It doesn't make sense. Single file Peloton. And drivers who will not wait. I have almost, more times than I care to say, people have come close to killing me to shave maybe five seconds off of their commute. Someone started to do a right hook on me as I was going down Redacre Road. They were going to Samuel Prescott, realized at the last second that he wasn't going to make it. Fortunately, I saw him, and stops right in front of me. I thought it was a police vehicle pulling me over for some reason. And I braked. I almost hit, you know, the passenger door. People will not wait for five to 10 seconds. They'd rather endanger someone's life. And we cyclists could really use some modified behavior. And when you're trying to fix all that through infrastructure, you've got to have some hits and misses.
Did you know a car passed me on Boxbauer Road going home last week? Because I was driving the speed limit.
Oh, sure.
I was shocked. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I will add to that. I mean, going the speed limit is a good idea. You know, I mean, that's, I think, the problem with Wheeler Road is people just don't want to go 25 miles an hour. I'm like, I'm sorry, most of our roads, it's the right, you know, yes, it feels slow, but how much of a difference is it really going to make? And you're that much safer. Plus, we're talking about the swerving out when people, you know, think it's better to swerve out into someone else's lane rather than, which is what the complaints were about the, what are they called?
The delineators.
The delineators. Like, right, you can't do that anymore. Oh, well, then you can't get away from the pedestrians. Well, then if you just went the speed limit, you wouldn't be hitting the pedestrians. So.
They just waste.
Yes. On that note, Steve, thank you for joining us. We won't just talk about traffic calming measures, but you've got to.
Talk about pavement management tonight.
Let's talk about pavement, and then we might have a few related questions later, but yes.
So I think before we get into the other stuff, we'll do the slideshow real quick, talk about that, because that'll get into some of how we set up the pavement plan.
Awesome.
Thank you, Board, for allowing me to discuss the Highway Department's pavement management program.
You guys have been busy this night.
We've already got a list of all the roads, the lengths, the widths, surface types. As we all know, estimated traffic uses all over the place right now. And it seems to work back to pre-pandemic traffic, plus some, depending on the time of day. Distress types, I'll go over some of those, so you guys can understand them here shortly. The severity of the distress, low, medium, high. And the extent of those distresses, the percentage of the roads that's covered with it, will dictate what I have to do for work. Evaluations for the roads. Distress types, alligator cracking, if you look right next to Mr. Alligator, that's the worst that we have to deal with around town. That pretty much knocks out a lot of stuff that we'd like to stay into. That's the low cost, like crack sealing, fog seal. We'll get into those. But that's the alligator crack, linear cracking. Bottom picture below that, it's going across the road. Potholes, of course, we all know those. Been a lovely season for that. Patching of the potholes, rutting is what you see happening on Great Road between the fire station and the traffic lights where the passenger side tire is starting to rut down. It's not supporting the loads of the heavy trucks, and that's because water's getting underneath the road. This all leads to a road surface rating. Might as well look at it as your kids going to school. A, B, C, D, F. We have number ratings, but that's the best way to look at it. We want to try and stay in the B-plus or better. That means low maintenance costs, preventive maintenance, the best place for us to be. That helps us set up our repairment recommendations, and then, of course, the repair costs. We want to stay in the mid-80s, like I talked about. B-plus ranges where most towns like to stay. For the town, for the Highway Department, 95% of my funding comes from Chapter 90 for our 55 miles of roads, which is about $283,000 a year. And for those of you that follow Mass Municipal Association, they just released the last 11 years. How much does the state raise Chapter 90 in 11 years? Zero. So how much can I do from when Mike was the superintendent 11 years ago to today? Basically, half of what Mike could do 11 years ago. We are getting a little bit of money from the pothole season, about half, to make up for some of that, but it's not enough. Then we have about five miles of private roads that are supported by town funding only, at about $15,000 to take care of potholes only. Network modeling, this gets into that scoring sheet. So routine maintenance is 80 and above. I look at that as, that's where we want to do our crack sealing and our fog seal, which is your driveway seal coating. That keeps rejuvenating the asphalt, starts its life with a UV rays over again, keeps it so I don't lose the roads. Preventive maintenance, we get in there to a little bit more in-depth stuff. We'll get into that in the next couple of slides. Minor rehabilitation, I just did some of that right now over on Crescent Street and West Acton Road. Got rid of some of the rutting, some of the stuff we tried to do with a new piece of equipment last year that we didn't do it right, had to redo, because it was a learning curve for us. And then what we don't want to get into is the major rehabilitation. That's going to break the bank for me. Road selection. Basically, I, right now, drive around, look at the roads. We have a scoring sheet that takes everything into account. I do a cost benefit value. I base what we have for the state funding, if we have anything coming in from town meeting to help with some of the smaller, low-volume roads, because we do concentrate on the higher volume, because that's where the danger is for my guys with patchy potholes, is to try to keep those up, because our liability is higher there for both repair and damage to cars. We'll go over the upcoming construction and project coordination a little bit later on. Other things that we have to deal with during that. We do take into account working with Mike and the Chief of Police on optimizing what we're going to do for road detours, closures, try to do the minimal that we can to disrupt. Most towns try to do most of their repairs, July and August, when school is out, taking that into account. And then we get into the treatment selection, and some of the treatments, we only have July and August to do. Get into why this road. First one's typical pothole. Center one is the start of the fines in the asphalt to be released. So now the volume, traffic gets louder with the tires, gas mileage goes down. It also opens up the pores to allow water to start going down through. So in the wintertime, it starts the potholes. And no wonder the right's starting to show the cracking going on it. So those are all the stuff that we want to eliminate water for infiltration to ruin the base. Again, more types of cracking. You've got the alligator or the manhole cover. You've got it going down one of your lanes in the other picture. That is all cracking. Again, that's all areas that we want to keep water out of, because it ruins the subbase if it gets down there. Our toolbox for treatments, we've got crack seal. Fog seal, which the way I describe it to everybody, it's commercial grade. It's like seal coating your driveway. I know, Jim, you don't like this one, the chip seal. Most towns have gone to a rubber chip seal instead of the old traditional. It's more modified with rubber and other things to hold the chips in. Microsurface is another one. It's close to a rubber, but it gives you that smoother ride as a bicyclist. A cape seal is actually a combination of the rubber chip and the microsurface. You do the first one, because you've got a lot of pitting and other things starting to happen. So you fill in some of the minor imperfections with, say, a rubber chip. And then to make the road sound nice and ride nice, you give it that microsurface, because it's more fines back on top of the road.
You do that on Sudbury Road, the eastern part of Sudbury Road?
Sudbury Road, when you get into.
State Road.
State Road, when you get into Sudbury. You and I talked about this. I told you, go take a ride. You did. The first half the road from our town line to Town Hall in Sudbury is just a microsurface. From the Town Hall in Sudbury to Wayland is a cape seal. Now, unless I had told that, most people thought they milled and paved it four years ago now. That was two simple surface treatments that made their money go farther and rejuvenated the road. Next is a mill and overlay, which is what we do a lot of. Cold in-place recycling has been around for about four years. It's about 10 years here in New England. We take and mill the road up, throw it through a machine. It gets Portland cement, added water, and liquid asphalt re-added, put back down on the road. You can drive on it in about 10 minutes, because it's not hot. It becomes the base layer again, and then you've got to do a treatment over the top. It's the least disruptive to the community. The most disruptive is full-depth reclamation, where we come in and tear the road apart, and it becomes a gravel road for a while. So she goes to the next. I kind of gave you the brief descriptions of them in the tool bag, but just some quick pictures of the crews working around town over the last year. That's crack sealing truck out doing the work and making it all better. Next slide is a fog seal. So like I said, it just looks like you just seal coated your driveway. It rejuvenates, and what's happening is the mixes are changing from mass DOT. So at about the four- to seven-year mark with the sun, and the way the sun's changed in the environment, you've got to rejuvenate the asphalt, or it starts losing the sand to make it a rougher surface, which means anybody that lives on Great Road or heavy traffic roads, the volume of the tires goes up. That's why. Next, just quick microsurface. As you can see, it makes it dark again, but it's filling in. All those little fines, putting them back in. Cape seal. It's a little bit more grittier. Bolton tends to like to use this one. But it does what it needs to do. It seals all those smaller cracks, keeps the water out, and it's fairly inexpensive. Next one's the mill and overlay, which we talked about real quick, but that's just the machines that are needed to do the work. It is disruptive to traffic. Cold place recycling. It looks just like milling, but the difference is it becomes a train. So you've got a truck out front with a big tank injecting the liquid asphalt. The Portland cement's dropped on the road, and then there's a tanker at the end with the water to mix it all, and then put it back into a paving box and drop it on the road. And the last, as I said, is the most disruptive to the town, full-depth reclamation. Come in with a road graders, pulverize everything, regrade the road, then put binder back on. This is why it's so important. As you can see, cost per lane mile, crack sealing is about $14,000. A fog seal is about $40,000. Chip seal is about $98,000. Microsurface is about $101,000. Cape seal is about $142,000. Mill and overlay today is $340,000. So that being said, I can do less than a mile of road if that's all I do in town and do worst to first. If you've got to do cold in place, I'd have to wait almost two years to save up the money to do it. And if I've got to do a full-depth reclamation, I have to wait almost three years and save everything in my penny bank to pay for it, to do a mile of road.
Can I ask a quick question? Does this include the escalation cost that we're dealing with today, or is this as of a few weeks ago before the rising prices?
This was just before the $1.20 raise in diesel fuel last week. And as some of you and I talked before this, asphalt in the last 30 days has gone up $25 a ton.
So to put that in perspective, it's going to cost us $10,000 to $15,000 more to pave the police station parking lot today than if we were able to do it last year because of the cost of asphalt and diesel.
And then the last that I take into consideration, when we do this, Mass DOT is pushing this hard when we ask for our funding from the state, is to make sure that we're reconstructing. I know we call them byways. They're not sidewalks, they're byways. But when they meet a road, that they meet all the ADA compliances. So that's another thing to think about. Handicap ramps are about $50 a pop. That's the quick down and dirty. And then I put together how we'd apply a little crib sheet that was all put in your package, talking about crack seal. I will be posting this on the website for everybody to see how I go around and decide what roads should be done, what the treatments are, gives a better description for you, and then we gave the determining factors as the definition underneath it. Our goal is to not ever get into a mill and pave or a full-depth reclamation. If I can stay in the crack seal, the fog seal, the chip seal, or the microsurface, I can get more bang for the buck. Asphalt was just recently released from Bay State Roads, the arm of UMass. All the kids doing their doctorates in engineering, do all this fun research. Asphalt is now good for seven years, thanks to the new mixes and everything that's going on. So if I can get 12 years out of a cape seal at half the cost, why would I do a mill and fill if I can do a cape seal and get 12 years versus seven years? So we're going to be looking hard at this. I have been working very hard to find a way to get an outside firm in to help us do a better evaluation of the roads. That's another set of eyes. I found a firm that it'll cost us $5,600 instead of $60,000. We're going to do most of the legwork. They give us the equipment. We'll drive around towns with their equipment, give them back all the data. They will look at it as engineers, crunch the data and score our roads for us as an outside engineering firm that deals with road pavement management. But we're going to do most of the in-house legwork. I've got that scheduled for July 11th. And then the last is the five-year paving plan that we put together. You can see what I've accomplished since I've been here, that I have records for since October of 2019, that Mike did just before he left. And then my first summer, State Road, Packard Road, all those. We are following what most towns do. If we do a treatment to a road or fix a road, somebody comes in and wants to cut into it.
Oh, that's what that is.
Yeah, no, that's great.
What does that mean? Okay.
They have to go, instead of just doing a little trench fix, they have to go and fix it back to, that's why Eversource doesn't want to go through Lower Village. Because they're waiting for that to end, because Eversource is trying to redo the gas line into Maynard to bring it up to today's standards and increase the size. So I'm trying to protect the infrastructure that way. So it's a five-year moratorium. Yes, if we cut into it, it doesn't exclude us, but we know that we have to make it like we would hold the contractors, just so they can't say anything to us, that way. But if we had to do something for a project, it doesn't exclude us. We just make sure that we plan that right with talking to each other. Any questions? I know you guys have all looked through this. This is most likely going to change, as Denise said. Escalation has gone through the roof. Every contractor that we have contracts with has come back to me in the last month and said, we need to come and go ask for what's legally right under state. and go ask for what's legally right under state statutes is the escalation, de-escalation clause. They're asking for gas, diesel fuel, Portland cement, and liquid asphalt. Liquid asphalt's gone up two hundred dollars a ton in the last sixty days. There's a formula to figure that out, but it does add up very quickly.
Can I ask you what, uh, this might be a stupid question, but what is RAP funding on?
RAP is that new one that I said that they just came out and gave us some money? They called it RAP, I'm working on getting the contract for Denise to sign right now, it's another hundred and eighty-four thousand that we have two years to spend. But it's another pot of money that just became available by Mast dot to help supplement, because the state hasn't given us any additional money in eleven years.
Right, so every once in a while they will do so, so it's winter road recovery, um, funds and.
Oh, the pothole money, sorry, that's for you.
So they did it, they did it several years ago when the state has a lot of funding, we have a relatively bad winter, they will give us some money, so yes, so, so the, um, the roads that are listed under the surface treatment, all those crack seals is what Steve is planning to take care of with that funding, so that will still leave our chapter ninety. Again, we're not sure how far that's gonna get us, uh, we talked today quite frankly about not doing any other projects until costs start to come down, we, we just can't afford it, we can't afford to spend money, more money, um, just because the costs are increasing. Uh, we need to come up with a better plan, um, and I know he is, and obviously there are other methods that can be done, but, um, you know, these rising costs are just killing us.
And is the chapter ninety not going up for anybody, or, I mean, is it, it's not just Stowe that's somehow getting?
Everybody's been getting the same for the last eleven years.
It goes up, I mean, it goes up minimally, you know? A thousand bucks here or there, it, it's very static with chapter ninety.
To talk to our legislators again.
They have historically, when they give cities and towns extra money, they put it into education first. UGA second, and then everything else. They'll fund it if you're lucky.
Or like they do, they'll do this one-time cash infusion so that it doesn't become part of our base chapter ninety, it's like, well, he has some extra money, go spend it. But don't count on it next year.
And that's where the July eleventh is to take that and reevaluate. Maybe things will change and prices will come back down, but I think this is gonna be a rough year for the highway department in costs. Every bill that I get in every month, stuff that we don't have on, because there's some things that we don't, we just call around to vendors to get some of the small stuff. They're all sending out slips of the, uh, fees for fuel. Fuel surcharges are back in a big way.
So, um, I don't, you, you said it, but I'm just asking, since, since you raised the, the idea of, what's the real word, byways? I mean, we don't have many byways, so in terms of that handicaps, because it, I mean, I totally get the, if we had them, the accessibility ramps, even though, well, anyway, you don't have to worry about them, but I'm, I'm just wondering, does that figure into any of your, I mean, right now, if I understand from planning board, it's sort of the only time we get byways added is if it comes through a developer, is that right?
That's the only way it's been done since Jesse's been here, and I've only been here too, and that's, I know that they've looked at payment in lieu of, because it doesn't make sense sometimes in a development.
And that happens a lot, it happens a lot.
Sidewalks in a development that only service twenty houses, but don't connect anywhere else.
I just, I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess I'm asking if, from, from highways perspective, there's not that many roads that it'd be, I wouldn't say any of them would be easy, but not, not many roads that would even be plausible to put in new byways slash sidewalks. But is that?
Harvard Acres has quite a few sidewalks in it, you have.
Pretty bad shape, from what I can see.
Yes, um, same with, of course, Great Road, there's areas of that that's in pretty bad shape.
Right, but that, I mean, unless we've got funding for it, you, you don't have the funding to, to fix the.
I don't have the funding, I'm concentrating on the roads first, because that's the, the biggest user right now is the roads and the bikes first. I know people wanna see the sidewalks, but again, we don't have the staff to maintain them. I don't, just trying to keep up with what we have for infrastructure is daunting.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Oh, sorry, Jim.
Well. I have three questions. First of all, Steve, thank you, that was a very professional, uh, presentation, and I really appreciate the work you've obviously put into that. So if I understand correctly, you, you presently have a database with rankings, but it's, it's, it's based on you driving around giving a number, is that?
Yes.
And you're, I'm not criticizing that at all, that's good, that's, that's, that's great, I mean, as long as it's the same person, it's uniform, right? But you're trying to move toward having a vendor who will give you more objective tools, can you talk a little bit more about that?
What a lot of the towns have done is, because of technology, instead of me riding around and scoring it, they have designed cameras and radar, it'll profile the road and show you where it's dipping and cupping, whereas me looking from naked eye, I might not see that it's starting to change right away, because it's only a little bit, I see the bigger thing, so they start to see that, the computer sees it much more quicker than we do, because it's, it's mapping it, it picks up all of our structures for drain structures, it picks up the telephone poles, the signposts, all of it will be put into the database, and then we can actually pull that out, work with Malcolm and G I S and tie that in to even make our plans and some of the stuff, because yes, we're an older community, that a lot of the farmers helped build this town. That there are no plans or records of where some of the drainage is, some of the stuff, so this will help close some of that loop that I'm having a tough time not growing up here. And with only Brian Hatch being the longest employee here, knows, some of the stuff might have been done, but because the crew might have been divided up, well, yeah, I know that Mike talked about that, or Bruce talked about it, but I wasn't on that crew, so I don't know exactly what happened in the records.
And you think this costs, let's say, under ten thousand dollars for a one-time fee or an annual like subscription?
It's an annual, I think the, the first couple of years, we'll probably do it annually to, to do some stuff at fifty-six hundred dollars versus sixty grand. And then drop to what most towns do is a bi-annual deal is to have them commit. And to me, that was very reasonable. So we do all the legwork.
Second question, and I used to know the answer to this, I know that the state takes care of nothing, including numbered roads, you'd think they would, but they don't. But I have the impression that they take care of some numbered roads, like I've always had the impression, I don't know why, that the state takes care of one-eleven enacted, am I wrong about that? Do they take care of any, any roads?
It all depends when, I wanna say it was Weld started doing the turnback stuff, it all depends if the towns jumped on board and said, we'll take the road, and then they just gave you more money in chapter ninety to maintain it, so if you do one-ten in Bolton and Harvard right now, and in Clinton, Mast D O T is out doing that, and one-seventeen through the Bolton Flats up through, uh, the Bolton Fairgrounds. They just milled all that, and then they're on the other side of one-seventeen out near, was it one-ninety, I always get that, one-ninety out in Lemonster? They did that section, so the state has a numbered road, still has that under the control of Plowey. I didn't know that until recently, I'm like, who's doing that?
Because the town made, because the town made some election to take chapter ninety rather than.
Have the state maintain it.
Can we give it back?
Bolton was actually, the state, from what I understand, Bolton just had the deal of, uh, Main Street, the state wanted to take part of it back, and the town didn't want them to.
Yes, I think I remember hearing of that. Um, third question, um, well, it's not really a question, just an observation, I guess, but I think you answered part of it. So even with your cheaper options, the roughly hundred thousand dollar chip seals and micro surfacing, you're only gonna get less than three miles a year out of your chapter ninety by.
If I do a lot of crack sealing, my target for what they tell us to do is about ten road miles a year. We have sixty miles of roads, so if you do that, that you wanna be doing about ten, you get any farther behind on ten. And what the towns are doing is four or five of those miles are crack sealed, because it's your first line of defense. So that keeps your, your, your numbers down, and then you get into maybe a couple of miles of the, the fog seal, which we're already looking at, what Mike did on Great Road in a couple of spots over the last couple of years, is those are starting to come up, where if you look at them, they're starting to go gray. Those fines are still there, but they're starting to release, so if I catch them in the next couple of years, I won't have to do something more expensive. So you stay with the lower ones and those numbers up higher to protect the good stuff, and then try to catch up with the bad stuff, because if I always go worst to first, I'll, everything that's good now will end up bad, before I get to it. So we have to invest, and Brian Hatch and myself sat down when I first got here, went to a lot of the classes, and we've agreed that the crack sealing is our biggest friend. And as you can see this last year, areas that have done the last two, it saved us on quite a few roads on having major potholes.
I really appreciate all of the description of the different processes and, and, you know, how the roads degrade, so that I can understand what you're talking about. Just really, thank you for taking the time to, to make that presentation, for anybody that's watching.
Yeah, yeah, and just to understand now, like, why you do certain things sooner than later, right, it'll save us money in the long run and, you know.
Yeah, and I'm excited about the G I S, because I think that's gonna be fantastic to actually have some records of these roads and, and what, like, to, I don't know, there's a lot of record keeping I feel like we're finally catching up on, and I'm really appreciative about that, because I think it just helps. It helps you plan, and it just, there's a redundancy there, that I think is just great and needed, and I think it's, it, I'm just, thank you. I was a associate member on planning board during the, uh, Lower Village Road, and so learned all about how, how this happens, so thank you so much.
Well, and I think that by having a survey done on an annual basis for at least the first few years will give us a lot of insight as to how the roads are deteriorating over time, so we can actually see, you know, maybe there is um, certain environmental factors that we're not thinking of that, um, have more wear and tear, I mean, maybe some of the chemicals we use to treat the winters, you know, so I think that will give us a good insight to just see, um, year after year, the progression of the roadways versus, and then look at the ones that we've been treating and crack sealing and just be able to compare to see how much longer we actually get out of some of these and have the actual physical data to prove it. Will be huge for us.
All right, well, thanks Steve, good luck, and really, everything's looking really nice, I saw you pop out today.
We're getting there slowly, it's spring and Memorial Day, we're already thinking about it, it's only what, three weekends from now?
And then, so just before Steve leaves, um, he did touch upon it in one of his slides, and I do have a memo in the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee that will be in your next packet, about private roads, and we've talked about this a little bit, and the fact that the town only appropriates fifteen thousand dollars a year, and it is just pothole maintenance. So we will talk a little bit more with this board about the process for folks, we've been getting a lot of calls from people that want their road to be a public roadway. Quite frankly, it's not that easy, especially when you look at roads around the lake that were built to no standards at all. And, and quite honestly, it will likely never happen for many of the roads in town that are private ways. Uh, but we think it's important to get the information out, have that conversation, uh, like Steve said, with, with all of this material, it will be on our website. The private road information already is on our website, but we will continue to reiterate that, um, because residents are unaware, they move into town, they don't know they're on a private way, they don't understand why we're not gonna fix their road, we're just filling some potholes, and, you know, we fill them once every few years. Um, so I think we need to have those conversations on an annual basis to remind folks, um, that we unfortunately don't provide those services, and, you know, these small private roads that may have, you know, two or three houses, you can certainly go to town meeting, but to appropriate six hundred thousand dollars to bring that road up to, um, the requirements, it's likely never gonna happen. So I, I just think we need to be honest about the private roads in this community and, you know, what the funding we have actually goes towards.
Yeah, I mean, as someone who lives on a private road and have had this conversation with my newer neighbors as they move in and, like, why, you know, certain whip or, you know, setbacks, I mean, it's, sometimes I think, would, could we just have a meeting where everybody has to come who lives on a private road and like, hear it once and for all? We know that wouldn't necessarily solve the problem, but sometimes.
Education is important.
Was that?
I said, education is important.
But I think it is on the website, and that's, and people can learn it then, yeah, so.
Maybe over time you can expand and have a whole page if you don't already for private planes.
We do, we have one, but I think, you know, if we can, um, yeah, I, I think the PowerPoint that Steve, um, and I assume Mac probably put together or fixed up a little bit, does a great job showing and showcasing the actual problem, I think the visual side of it, so if we can do some of that with the private roads and, you know, just sort of visualize some of it or, or quantify, um, so that people can actually see it, uh, versus just reading a narrative, people don't wanna read, so, um, we'll find some creative ways to get that point across.
Well, and the traffic, and I'll, another point for the Traffic Safety Committee, because I think not only are you guys, you have the right people in the room trying to solve some of these problems that overlap, but also that it's made it really easy for people. Maybe they'll send a few love notes too, not just complaints, but you know, it's really easy to, to fill that out and say, can you explain to me why? You know, and, and that's what people should be doing, instead of just writing on Facebook, not productive.
Well, I think the biggest thing that I've seen out of that traffic is Mike actually put under the form, what do you recommend we do to the board, have you thought this through? And that's actually where the Ballard deal in the, on the edge of the road or down the centerline came from, is a resident said, I've seen this in Maine. Can we try it here? It could be a low-cost solution, and we looked into the cost, they're less than forty-two dollars a piece by the time you buy it, and then the labor to just go install, so you're looking at fifty bucks. That's a cheap solution to see if it works, versus something else that is gonna cost us a lot more. And the residents that have the problem seem to think they're working in that immediate area, it's the people that are cutting through that it's, they don't like it.
Cool, right, that's, isn't that the nature of public service, right? Can't win them all, so.
We'll try. There's a whole bunch of things in the toolbox, we'll try to find the right tool to make it work.
All right, well, thank you, Steve.
Thank you so much, Steve, appreciate it.
Okay, Mike has now made it on, he can hear us now. We were having a little technical problem, so I wasn't sure Mike was gonna join us, but he's here, so, um, so everybody got a copy of the SMART slides around the Red Acre Project. Um, that was the one thing we didn't address last meeting around if, whether we, we wanted to take a vote or not, so, um, Mike, let's just test that you can hear me, or you, we can hear you?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, okay, thank you for joining us. Um, so, I don't, and we're not gonna go through all the slides, um, well, you're gonna do these at town meeting, so we don't need to see them again tonight. Um, I think, I guess I'll just open it up to the board if there was particular questions that came up as you read the slides. I know there's some questions around the funding from, you know, over, over the several years that this project started up on, so. Questions?
I, I have a procedural concern, sorry. Um, being that we are in open meeting right now, I think, I don't feel comfortable talking about something that was not in correspondence and is not out for the public to see.
Well, it was on the agenda.
That's fine, but the slides were not, like, the actual things. So I think unless we're planning on putting them up there, I don't wanna talk that through right now.
Um, the request at the last meeting was to get information so that if, whether we wanted to take a vote, I mean, it's all, it's all been, they've had public hearing, I mean, they've had meetings about this, it's not like this is the first time it's been seen, but people.
I understand this, Alan, but you emailed the board separately, the slides. Which is not how we go through things. So my concern is procedural. That's Mike, I mean, I, you've been doing this for twelve years, I could be completely overthinking it.
Well, I would say let's set aside the email to the board as its own issue. There may have been an issue there. But in terms of the transparency for this meeting, I think I'll pick up on your invitation, and I will just say that Mr. Kupchinsky shared some information with us through the chair. When I got out of it, answered a good portion of my questions. Just to recap for those of you following at home, last week, several of it, I, I had asked, but other people had the same question. He, since we're subsidizing the cost. Hey, since we're subsidizing the cost of the land. Do we really need an additional subsidy? And certainly, do we need an additional one million dollars in subsidy? How do we know that? The bottom line, what Mr. Kupchinsky shared, he had kind of done his own informal pro forma, you know, balance sheet for a project. The bottom line I got was he estimates about one point four million dollars of revenue. Which since the costs, whoever you can get from affordable houses is fixed. That's pretty reliable. Then he was estimating. Doing this from memory, uh, four hundred thousand dollars in construction cost per unit, six units, so roughly two point four million. So there's a one million dollar gap. So that's why. You should need a subsidy. So, I mean, let's just say this. I saw information that I thought persuaded me. That the two hundred twenty five thousand dollars in land subsidy was most likely not enough. And that there was was gonna have to be more. But the follow up question I had, Mike. Was can I assume that if if town meeting appropriates this money from CPC? That you're not just gonna go out, find a developer and hand them a million dollars. You you're gonna go through competitive procurement and ask for bids. So that the the one point one million dollars is a a cap. But we might not actually have to spend that.
Correct. Um, the we would go through this, the you know. S M O T does not want to be the developer. S M O T wants to put an RFP out to find a developer, most likely a nonprofit developer, who'd be willing to develop six units of housing for us. Uh, the reason that there these are all called subsidized, you know, the S H I is the subsidized housing inventory is that. You can't build a house for what you need to, you know, to cost more to build a house than 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 you can sell it for. So there always needs to be a subsidy. Um, and that's, you know, kind of the the that's what makes it affordable housing, right, is that it's subsidized uh publicly. So um, this is actually, we normally ask for about. Or we have in the past when we've done this, asked between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, subsidy per unit. Um, and the reason it's less now is is twofold. One is is that. The because of interest rates right now, the the purchase prices are higher, so there'll be more revenue from the sale of it. Um, and um, and second of all is that we the 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 acreage. Two hundred twenty five thousand dollars for that acreage was a pretty low number. So both of those, so that was a low, there's a low cost to the land and um. There's there's less of a gap between um. Uh, between construction costs and the uh what we can sell those units for. Does that make, does that answer your question, Jim?
I think so. I mean, what I'm taking from it, Mike, is that you're gonna do an RFP process and.
Correct.
You know, that means. There could be developers out there who have subsidies from other sources, you know, like I know.
Unlikely, unlikely, but yes. I mean, these are ownership units. There are more subsidies available for people doing rental housing. They're really for ownership units. There there really is, I mean practically, there are no other um, there are no other sources besides local sources.
But the competitive process will guarantee maybe we'll get some that will say, hey, I don't need any subsidies. Hey, I only need four hundred or maybe we'll get bids all dollars, but the competitive.
And we're, you know, we're public employees, so we were gonna go through, you know, through our, you know, our or the town procurement agent. Who I'm looking at on the screen. So we we will be working at working with Denise to um. To make sure that, you know, and you know, we do have to take the lowest bid if the the lowest qualifying bid. So the the key is for making the RFP. Uh, specific enough and um, and which is one of the reasons we need, you know, we need a how we why we have a housing specialist. Uh, consultant to help us build these bids so that we we're thinking of everything and and everything's in in order.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And and I think the other part that I read in this was the importance of um. To to have the funding early. I mean, this was a question that came up with the CPC as well that uh, why are we asking for the money already? But it the developers need to see that the town has the money to do it. So even though. It feels a little like, wouldn't we like to get the bid first and then ask for the money? It doesn't work that way in this. This sort of market of affordable housing development. Is that right? Did I say that right, Mike?
Yes, and and particularly with right now with with the with how difficult it is to get things built and how expensive it is right now. That there we're just not gonna get, we're just we're unlikely to get people to respond, developers who will respond to a bid unless the fund unless that risk piece. Is um. Is reduced.
Actually, I think I would extend that to many of the many of the projects that the town looks at that. That basically if the funding is in place, then you get a different response to an RFP than if. They don't know whether you get the money or whether you're gonna.
Right, right, absolutely.
They don't see the town meeting as approved.
Yep.
We're gonna move forward, then then you don't get that kind of response that you're looking for from that. At its library.
Yeah. And I just want to say in terms of Megan, your concern, I, you know, the the slides are slightly different, but if this was the information I thought we needed that had already gone to CPC and is already.
It's totally fair. I just I'm.
It it should have been in the packet.
Yeah, it just.
That was that was my bad. Um, we had we had two dates. Uh, the 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 days. Monday was the day to get the slides in for town meeting, but I that I slipped my mind that the. Friday, they had to get in by Friday to get in the packet and uh. So that was that was completely on me. So I apologize.
I have a quick question though, Mike, and if you could just take indulge me for a quick second. The are the units that you're proposing for that area, you were saying they're ownership units only? Is that how like we? You can you only say that they're going to be ownership units and they couldn't be rental units? Because I know that that's just we have a dearth of that in this town.
Yes.
Didn't know whether.
No, so 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 rental 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 projects, in order for those to be uh financially viable. They have to be much larger uh because there because there's fixed costs, right? So when you're selling, when you're when you're selling them, you actually get money back. If you're renting it, you have to kind of amortize your costs and your management costs. And so you need to have a certain number. We did look into the possibility of renting this and and contracting with the community builders who manages. Both Pilot Grove and Plantation. Uh, we we looked into the possibility of whether they they could just kind of add these few units. Uh, and whether that would be cost effective because there are there are a lot of subsidized funds from the state available. For projects from four to twenty units for rentals. But um, but it it turned out that though it didn't really, the numbers didn't really, when we we did the numbers and we were getting pretty excited about it, but the numbers didn't work out for that because um. Uh, because it was only six units. So um, anyway, so that that's.
No, but that that actually is great information. So thank you. Thank you.
Just thought of one additional thing. At the at the risk of opening another can of worms. Um, what you were just saying made me realize the other way to get to to reduce a subsidy and get a developer money. Um, is to allow some portion of market rate units.
Correct.
Have you have you considered is is it on the table? Um. Allowing, for example, two market rate units for four affordable rate units.
Right, they've done that. That so this was land was purchased with C P A funds.
Oh, and it has.
It was actually wasn't. It was the the land was purchased, the conservation land was fact captured with CPA funds, but the. Our portion was born with was purchased just with trust funds just for that reason, because so we wouldn't be constrained. But Jim, there's there's two things go two things. Yes, we've considered it. Surprisingly, we could sell, for instance, two market rate units. And it would actually not change the subsidy all that much. If it's if you kind of work out the numbers. It would it would reduce it by about twenty thousand dollars per unit. So let's say we did six. So we also have an agreement, the agreement we did originally with. Um, the Conservation Commission and S C T when we did this, it was gonna be for six units all affordable. So we kind of tied ourselves into this when we bought that. But the second piece was that even if you did that, and we've looked at this before. Um. You don't make it because you can't really, you can not, you're not gonna, you can't, if you since there's gonna be a relatively small amount of land, et cetera. You can't put like a one point two million dollar house there, right? You're you're the houses that are gonna go next to it. They they need to be kind of in the same scale. And they're gonna be sharing a septic system and those kinds of things. So you can't make a crazy lot of money of money on the market units. To subsidize the other ones. Now, like something like Stowe Acres where you have lots of them, you can you can spread the infrastructure out over the ownership units so that the rental ones are kind of free, right?
So so will the RFP be structured that if the developer wanted to propose that, they could or?
No.
Okay.
No, it's a it the the main the main chat, the main thing will be for the the flexibility there. Whether whether it's gonna be like six detached units or four detached units and one common wall unit, you know, like one duplex and four individual you though. Uh, because and and what the number of bedrooms are, et cetera. That's where the flexibility will be there and that you kind of need to give that to developers to for for them to make make sure the numbers work for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Denise, did you have any questions? Okay. Um, Mike, any last thoughts before we, I guess we are gonna take a vote either now or when we get to our town meeting discussion.
One of the other questions we always get is is that, well, uh, if 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 like the there's a number of proposed projects that. Could potentially put us over ten percent. So why should we build this? And there's there's three reasons. One is is that. Even though they're proposed and everything looks good, they're not, we don't, we have, we don't know that yet. And so we need to continue to um. You know, until those are locked down, we need to continue to perform against, you know, our plan, our housing plan. The second um, the the second issue is that um, there are funds that are in, there's almost nine hundred, there's nine hundred thousand dollars in. The affordable housing only part of the CPC. And this is a very cost of act, you know, in terms of using that money to get. Units, this is very cost effective compared to other ways of doing it, like, you know, buying down. You know, by buying market rate units and putting affordable restrictions on them and the other options. This is gonna be, this is gonna be a really, you know, like a like a like a good, it's gonna be a better deal than than most of the. Projects we've we've seen. And the third thing is is that those bigger projects are gonna. Phase in over a number of years, probably three to four years. So if you look at when they, let's say they start in twenty twenty three, maybe twenty two, and who knows? But let's say if that goes three or four years, we're out at twenty twenty six and the number's gonna go up again in twenty thirty. So we, you know, it's it's if we get over the ten percent. In twenty thirty, we might be behind. So we have to, unfortunately, we have to kind of keep up, keep a pace. So that's a question that's come up a number of times, and I think it's just important for people to hear that.
Great, awesome. Okay, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Do we, I think we'll wait and just do our votes when we do that. We have one item before that, so. Thanks, Mike.
All right. Thank you very much. Bye bye.
Um, so the Masters Academy, so we discussed this at our last meeting. Um, this is the official legal review of the agreement.
Mm hmm.
Um. I know my only question, which I um, I think I got clarified was around the community park and the use of that. Um. Um, I was just concerned like there wasn't some ongoing review, but um, I think the clarification is that that's part of the rec department's. Purview and they will come up with a different kind of agreement that will probably have some sort of. Annual or some period of time review. So um, that was really my only concern that that popped up when I read this. But lawyer, did you see any language you were concerned about?
No, actually I didn't. I checked, like compared it to the minutes. I thought that I saw that everything we discussed had been addressed. The turf thing. Basically, it was delegated to the rec commission, which I think is appropriate. And uh. No.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I thought it was.
It is very exciting. I will, I really, it was said earlier, it's, you know, it's like, wow, this is really gonna happen. This is really cool, you know, so. Yeah?
No, I don't have any more questions. I just didn't. Do you want me to address the comments that came in?
Uh, if you think that's appropriate, I'll I'll let you, yeah. Um, well, I can't obviously go into too much. It's between two private parties and and their discussions. Um, what I will say to Anne's comment is when I had seen the. Um, findings, I think there are three wells on the property, one of them.
Had a higher um parts per trillion and quite frankly, I think it was twenty three with a threshold in Massachusetts. So it is just slightly over the threshold. Um. That being said, that quite frankly, anybody that purchases that property will have to deal with PFAS. Um, it is my understanding that um. Bose does not want to. Treat the PFAS. They want that to be decided within the negotiation terms and whoever purchases it remediates the PFAS. Um, I think that's one of their points that they've been going back and forth on. Um. So don't quote me on that, but uh PFAS has been an ongoing topic of discussion between the seller and the buyer.
And and I think the key thing is it's not Stowe's responsibility.
It is not Stowe's responsibility. Um, there's some, there's some belief, um, and I only heard this through Peter Masters, so I don't know the validity of it. Um, he seems to think that when um, the when their engineering firm came in and not their Masters Bose. Engineering firm came in and did their testing. Um, they found that uh, where they believe that the contamination came from. Fertilization and topical solutions used on the property. Um, so to their understanding, they would not need to. Remediate it like we need to remediate it from the former fire station. Um, it's not as um. Ground consumed as our, so they just need to deal with it on the sort of a filtration level and not a full remediation. Is what he seemed to believe after talking to their L S P or the two L S Ps talking back and forth. Um. But I do know that that is. One of the final points that they need to work out, um, because obviously it impacts the purchase price if now the buyer is. Going to be tasked with remediating PFAS that came from the seller. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so if we're ready, I will uh take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the select were approved and signed the development agreement for the Masters Academy Inc. Pending. Well, I don't think I have to say pending.
I would ask that you keep that in, um, because their counsel had a few words here and there that he would like us to review, um, and I didn't get that by this evening.
Pending non-substitute changes.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous. Yahoo. Okay, so town meeting. Um, I think we had a few things. Oh, and I think I saw um, the moderator is on. David, are you still here? Yes, um, so, um, but um. I I I think at least I would like to ask if people are comfortable um, taking a vote on supporting Red Acre, the S M O T presentation proposal. Um, I didn't know if there was anything other articles that people have come up with since then that they wanted us to to consider. Um, then there's some of the logistics things that um have come up through various correspondence and questions. Um, so uh, those were the couple of things. I want, I guess, let's just start with um, a vote on. Uh, the S M O T presentation. I would I would like to make a motion that the select board support the proposal for Red Acre Road. Affordable housing.
What article?
It's Article forty two.
Thank you. I should have known that. Yes.
I'll I'll make it. Um.
Okay.
I'll move that we that the board support Article forty. Recommend that town meeting support Article forty two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. Um, I guess the other part, are there any other articles that people wanted us to vote on?
I thought we.
We did vote on.
We did, everything last, I don't know.
I just, I mean, this is one last chance to, you know.
Nope.
If something else struck you.
Discussed or voted or disposed of everything else.
Right, right, right. And so then the question is whether we want to make any additional statement and it's particularly the library and the Red Acre project. If there's something else we want to add. Usually when the select board, since it's a rare thing that the select board vote on things, that they have a little more to say rather than just saying we support it. So that was a question. Um.
May I add a comment?
Sure, of course.
Um, I do just want to comment that the Community Preservation Committee met last night, um, and they will, or they took a vote to rescind, even though I told them that's not the right verbiage. Um, so they'll be requested table Article forty three at the start of that discussion. Um, so they have withdrawn in essence that article. And that was the town hall, sorry. Yes, the town hall restoration project.
Okay. Um. So I don't know. Does anybody have thoughts about um? I mean, I and and I guess we would have to post a special meeting on.
There is one. I posted one for that morning.
Um.
If you needed to have a meeting for any purpose.
Oh.
Eight thirty, it's posted.
Cause I could just, I mean, I'm happy to to draft it in, I mean, two sentences on each one of them, um, just to. You know, our sort of perspective as select board on why we support the library, why we support Red Acre, but. Thoughts?
Yeah, I, well, may I?
Yes, please.
I mean, I'd definitely like to um. Say something about the library. I I know um. I was going to speak uh uh personally on it unless we cover the same ground as a board. Um, and my bottom line is that. And I don't, I have a figure how to say this. We're not going to get this opportunity again. It is a reasonably priced option to get us the programmatic space that our librarian says she needs. Um, I say reasonably priced because. Very large share of that overall price, at least half. Is just bringing the building up to code. Again, that doesn't mean that the building is currently out of code. It just means that once you start renovations, you have to bring it up to. And what it reflects is that Massachusetts changes its building code frequently. And it just keeps adding in tons of expensive, wonderful things. It's not something we can control.
It's not just Massachusetts, it's it's.
It's the whole country, okay, and since nineteen seventy-five. Since since nineteen seventy-five, it's changed a tremendous amount. So that is a huge percentage. But when you combine that with the fact that the town administrator has. Scooped up some funds from other sources and driven the price down by about two million. Before any fundraising begins. I think it's fair to say reasonably priced for the programmatic space. That we need. I hesitate to say we need because I am not a library professional. And I defer to Tina, I trust Tina, um, and I think she can defend this space. You're not going to get something like this. It it is not a Taj Mahal. If anything, it is less square footage than we have now because it is uses the space far more efficiently. Um, I would hate to see people. Who believe or or basically believe everything I just said, then vote against it because of the aesthetics. Because the aesthetics are not set in stone at all, and that is not, it wasn't meant to be. I mean, that is very much still an open question. The committee and the consultant focused mainly on. The amount of space we need for a price we can afford and did not, as it's appropriate at this stage, focus on the aesthetics. What what Denise said about expanding the committee to bring all voices to the table is a model we've followed on other projects and I think could work here on that question.
I mean, I think any, I'm sure Owen can speak to being on a building committee and what you start with and what you end up with are very often two very, very different things. And so I think it's just important to um. I don't know. I I'm sure the the library presentation will be fantastic and will cover all of these things and.
It's very in-depth.
I'm, I, you know, personally, as a a parent of a middle schooler, I have a child who. He goes there after school and he studies and it is safe enough that he can walk there from the middle school. Um, he can walk there from the middle school, he has a place and then he can walk home and it's, I know that he's enjoying um. That time, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Can you not mute?
I, he keeps on muting.
Oh, great.
Um, I I mean, I think, you know, in addition to that, we we depend on our library professionals. Just as a user, I, you know, having been to some other um, more recently renovated libraries, I realize. What already, even during COVID, what um, our librarian was able to do with the space that we thought was sort of unusable. And in terms of that kind of study space. You know, what what a modern library really needs and that's, you know, I've thought they've done just a tremendous job to date with the with the committee to. Come up with a proposal that does use, you know, the the same stories we've heard for, and this is how many years of talking about this too, so I think it's just. It really is time. So I think you've you've outlined some really good, we can come up with that statement, so.
And if I can add to your statement, I mean, quite frankly, one of my biggest concerns is safety and the building that they're currently using is not a safe building. I mean, the ceiling, there's tarps hanging, there's water coming in, there's no accessibility. I mean, I think to me. Um, that's one of my priorities. There's no dedicated workspace for the staff. I mean, they can't even take a break anywhere. It's just. It's not conducive to fostering um, a healthy and happy work environment. It's just not. Um, so I know that people may look to that as saying, oh, that's secondary, but it's not. It's a primary focus of. Of this project is the safety aspect of it, um, for our patrons and our employees.
Yeah, I mean, it's embarrassing to see those pictures and like, you know, that we've been permanently with tarps for how long now, so, but. Courtney, anything you want to add?
Well, no, I would, I would just point out that having leaky roofs in a library doesn't make any sense to me. But I recently attended um, the reception for an art show that's there and it was just delightful and I think having. Having a library that can host events like that and and, you know, all the things that the library does, all the programming that. Has happened over the last several years, um, Tina and and the director before, it's just. Needs a space that is workable. My recollection is that the last time there was a library. Project proposed to town meeting, it actually had a higher price tag than this.
No, it wasn't.
I thought I remembered ten million.
Four to five, four, I think. I mean, maybe if you factor inflation, I don't know.
But it wasn't a major renovation, was it?
Yeah, it was a, it was, it was largely the same thing, scab off the nineteen seventy-five. Extension and build something, but it was build something far bigger. It was, I think it brought the the square footage up to just about ten thousand square feet.
Well, I, yeah, so I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do. So um, do you want to draft a statement?
Sure, um, I mean.
I I wrote notes of what you just said, but.
Okay, um, yeah, it'll just be a few sentences.
Right, yeah, great. Um, how about in terms of the the Red Acre project? I mean, I would just, I mean, I I think what, for me, what's sort of the questions that were raised here were the of the ones that we'd say, you know. These are six all affordable ownership units, you know, it's reasonable for the neighborhood, the neighborhood currently is in support of it. You know, it's um. And it's just moving us forward on the affordable housing, which has been challenging.
Yeah, yeah, I think it'd be nice to mention that the six, the six affordable units was by agreement with the other groups.
With the other partners.
The other partners. And um. Yeah, moving us forward continually keeps, gives us safe harbor.
Right.
Can I suggest one other thing?
Yes.
We should be ready to maybe support Denise on the um. Rolling into the salaries of the educational.
Yeah, I I would, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep, yep.
You know, not that she's going to need it, but we should be prepared. Um, I think we can say truthfully, because I've been reviewing. Town meetings. And we can say truthfully that at least as far back as twelve years ago. There were extensive questions at town meeting. About why are these substantial elements of salary being put over to the side, lack of transparency. Bill would stand up and truthfully say, we're not hiding anything, everything's there. Um, what he didn't say was, he just got to do a little bit of addition. And so what she is doing is responding to these longstanding concerns. And yes, the first year it's going, there's going to be a line item that looks like an eleven percent raise. It all nets out when you. See that the article, the separate article that used to be in the consent calendar is now gone. But I think it's important that we be ready to. I'd be happy to be ready.
And maybe we do it proactively, you know, why wait? In, I mean, in terms of saying that.
I think the only reason not to is I'm sure she's going to do that.
Well, I will, although I did it last year, because last year was the vote to eliminate the education incentive, so. I mean, my comments on that this year will just be to remind folks that.
We already had this conversation.
That we discussed this as a group last year and 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 agreed that we were going to roll out this new classification plan to incorporate that. And that we knew this first year was going to look like a big hit. Because it was not only the hundred and forty-five thousand, um, but it also includes a separate article from last year that was eighty thousand to implement the changes of the classification plan. So that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is now rolled into the line items. That, and and I have learned in the last, you know, week that nobody reads my cover letter and that I put in the warrants specifically. Um, that articulates that. So we've gotten some questions and some comments and as soon as we explain it or say. There's a letter that explains it all, people are fine, but um, they sort of skip that and jump right to the numbers naturally.
I would actually suggest we just, we wait until there's a question or two, just because, I mean, our voters tend to be very smart and i- if she says it. Chances are they're going to get it. Um, there's also, there have been several years where the budget just sails through with no questions.
Right. Put the cranks, don't you? Okay, um, any other uh, articles that we want to make an additional comment about? Those were the, and we did, there was a few that we, you know, we said last week we we voted on at the, but they didn't seem like they needed additional comments.
Did we get any more information about this article forty-one?
Yes, I can.
Add that if you'd like.
All right.
This is the National Guard Reserve tax relief.
So the National Guard Reserve Tax Relief, this is not a new exemption. Um, the state law requires you to uh, re-vote it every two years. The first time it went into effect was in twenty twenty. Uh, we've had one person take advantage of it. It was. Um, so the requirement is that. Uh, I do want to comment, so people are having a sound problem. Um, it is not here, so we've, we've said if people log out, log back in, it's. Tending to clear up the issue, um, but both Linda and David are having some issues hearing us. So the requirement is that you must be an active National Guardsman, so you do um, train on the weekends. And then you need to be deployed um, overseas. So the one taxpayer that took advantage of it was deployed overseas for one hundred and twenty-four days. Um, he received an exemption for four thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents on his taxes. Because it is prorated for the number of days you are deployed overseas. There is no income or asset limit, there is no state reimbursement, it is charged to our overlay accounts. Um, and when it was approved in twenty twenty, it passed annual town meeting by a vote of seventy-nine to five.
Okay, so I just worry that there, and and maybe this is the, here's the grammar police or the punctuation busy. Cause the way it reads, it's, it seemed like. That the active duty part wasn't, was in, is another option, like it could be anybody who's in the National Guard. And reservists on actual, you know, on active duty. So that's a question for lawyers, I think.
Well, it's accepting a statute, so.
So.
So that wording doesn't matter.
Oh, so it doesn't, okay, that's what I want to hear. See, this is my.
And obviously counsel reviewed it. Um, yeah, so this is pretty much the same.
But if it's just.
The same article that was put forth in twenty twenty, it just changes the fiscal years.
Just want to make sure we're not opening ourselves to having to.
But I only suggest it's supporting this because I thought it was new. So if it's not new. I don't need any, I don't, I don't feel the need to call attention to it. There's, there's other good ideas in the consent calendar that we don't support. So I don't feel the need to call it out.
That's fair.
That's fine. Back to see if that, I don't think we just had questions about it, but I don't think that was one of the ones we. Oops, wrong, the wrong minutes. Just checking. That wasn't one of the ones we voted on.
No, it was just an article that you had questions on.
Okay, so so that's it for for um. For supportive articles. Um, so logistics, um, and David is on, I don't know if David is back on or if he can hear us.
He is back on. Um, Linda is saying the sound is garbled.
Is it because of my mask? Is it just me?
Oh, everyone.
Yep, hi, David. Well, now we hear you. Um, so, so I know that um, one of the questions that's come up from numerous phone calls and emails I've received is around. Um, the mask requirement for town meeting. I noticed our numbers are six point two five percent as of Friday. So I'm strongly in favor, obviously, of wearing masks at town meeting and I'm just wondering. What folks, I mean, it's, it's the moderator's call, but thoughts?
I don't think it's the moderator's call.
It is, it's actually, if you guys read your mask moderators, the moderator sets the, sets the meeting terms. It's always been that way.
Not something like that. Somebody, somebody with a lot of degrees is going to have to tell me that. I don't think either the moderator or we. Have the authority to say people can't vote because they don't bring a mask. Absent the state of emergency. The only thing that gave us the authority to do it last time or or two years ago was the state of emergency.
Okay.
I, you know, I, I think strongly recommending masks as. Not only a health precaution, but courtesy, um, is a very good idea, but. You know, and I'm really asking a question about the the legal authority. I certainly don't know of any. Am I missing something?
CDC guidelines. We would be meeting CDC guidelines to request to have masks.
Which don't have enforcement effective law.
The kids, I. My only thing is, I, it's, it's at Hale where the school has decided that. No one has to wear a mask in that school. I don't, I'm, it's not going to stop anybody, but I, from wearing their own masks, certainly. Um, but I do think it's, and trust me, I've worn a mask the entire time, I've gotten vaccinated, I've done all the things. Um, I do think that we are moving from a pandemic to an endemic phase and I think that part of that is modeling. That kind of movement forward. Um, certainly, a- and that's, that's my own two cents on it. I. I think everybody else can say what they want, but.
On the other hand, we, we had, we had a letter in correspondence today that that requested. That we be sure that there's a place for for outdoor attendance, which I.
Which I think there is.
Speakers.
Yeah.
So that, so that someone can attend, but not make comments without coming indoors, is that correct?
I don't.
Yes, right.
So um, I think that people that feel at risk. In whatever way, if they're comfortable coming inside with a mask on, by all means, wear a mask.
Right, right.
You know, I just, as a product of matter, whether the moderator require that or we did or the Board of Health or whoever. Does requiring mask mean somebody shows up to register? They don't have a mask, hey, where's your mask? I don't have one, I don't intend to wear one. Oh, you can't come in, you can't, you you can't vote?
We cannot turn people.
So how can we require, that like that?
I think I, what I'm little disappointed is how weak the argument is. I mean, I, I agree, we can't require it, but. I mean, the numbers are jumping up daily. I mean, the number of people getting sick is increasing rapidly, so why wouldn't we strongly encourage people to wear a mask?
Well, nobody said that.
Well.
I feel like we came into this discussion as a where. All right, hang on a second. The first thing that was said was we're going to require masks. I don't, we're, I don't feel comfortable doing that. I'm certainly fine if we want to suggest. That people, it strongly suggests that people wear masks because we're going to be in a closed room. That's fine, that I'm fine with. When you get into the situation where a vote is going to happen. We cannot require that. We would be opening ourselves up to lawsuits all over the place if we said we're going to require masks. In this building or you can't vote when the state does not have a mandate at this moment.
Got it.
For masks, and that is my biggest concern.
Yes.
Quite frankly, even during the state of emergency, we could not require, you could not kick somebody out of a a town meeting if they refused to wear a mask. So you cannot restrict people from their right to vote.
There was an exception.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, we also made it, we gave a lot more options.
For town meetings. The state of emergency had some kind of exception for town meetings.
Yes, it did. There was no requirement for mask mandates at town meetings because you cannot restrict.
Yeah.
A voter's right.
And I remember thinking, you know, the only thing that got us even close was state of emergency and even then we couldn't do it. But now, I.
Right. I'm just, I'm concerned, I mean, we're not doing a lot, I'd like town clerk can talk about, you know, sort of what the setup's going to look like. I mean, in terms of, because I, I mean, there are people who won't come to town meeting. Well, there's some people that have asked if there was seating outside and there is seating outside. I think Denise, you mentioned that, and there is seating outside. Um, so there's also too is, when we were doing the elections, if somebody came in and didn't want to wear a mask, they. We would have a section where they could go where they were distanced from everybody else over, you know, they could go to the side very. Most people put the masks on.
So, um, but we're gonna have the clickers and people will be able to vote from outside. They're gonna have that seating area outside. So if they didn't wanna come in, they could sit out there, um, for both people who don't have a mask or whatever. I, I would strongly encourage, cuz I know that there are many people, um, that are, um. Concerned about being in the building and where, and not having masks on. I'm sure they'll be wearing masks, but I don't know.
I have two questions. Are we going to model our recommendations by wearing masks ourselves? And are we going to have some masks available if somebody would like to wear one for whatever reason and they didn't bring one?
Do we still have supplies?
So yes, we still have supplies. I mean, it's up to the.
Three hundred.
Right, no, no, we still, we, but, but quite frankly, then you get into the conversation about, quite, you know, a regular surgical mask is not considered. A true mask anymore, so now you need N ninety-five masks if you really wanna add that layer of protection. But, that being said, um, you know, I think if it's suggested, um. And I believe in talking to Jonathan, we plan to have the cafeteria set up again, so if people wanna be in the cafeteria, they can. We tested last year, you could be pretty much in that whole front parking lot and the clickers worked. I've asked uh the fire chief to bring some of his pop-up tents, which we did not do in the fall, but it's supposed to be very hot and sunny. So if people wanna bring a lawn chair and sit outside, the presentations will all be on our website, so if they don't wanna see, or don't wanna come in, they can follow along. Through our website, they'll be able to hear and vote from outside. I did ask Jonathan, um, he's planning to go tomorrow to check the microphones. Uh, he won't know until we actually set up Friday night, um, but if we could put a microphone by that side door, so that if someone has to come in, they just have to step foot in the door. The problem we had with that in the fall was that it was raining, it was supposed to rain that day. So if he can, if we have enough microphones and he can put one by the door, so yes, someone could just step in, ask their question and then go right back outside, then we will do that. Um, what we will not do is we will not provide the outdoor setup like we did the last two years. Um, I know there's been questions, I know there's some apparently feed all over Facebook. The cost to do that is about thirty-two thousand dollars to the town to do that outdoor setup, to rent the tents, the tables, the chairs, the porta-potties. Run the equipment, hire extra personnel. It is a huge expense that we just don't have anymore to put that type of. Outdoor town meeting on. Hale does not have the same accessibility that we have at Center, but quite frankly, Hale is much easier for us to maneuver in. For a town meeting setup. Um, you know, folks don't understand that, I mean, Linda and Deb were there till, when I tell you the wee hours of the morning. Last spring, they were there till two, three in the morning, because Center School is, you have to set every single thing up. It took us a long ti- I mean, I was there for hours and then I went home. Hale School, it's the auditorium, we don't have to set up tables and chairs and drag everything. Um, it's much easier for the technology setup. It's, it's contained, they have the projectors. Um, so I understand the, the concerns of folks. I will tell you, I've spoken to a number of my counterparts who have had town meetings in the last week, none of them required masks. None of them had people not show up. Um, I know there will be people concerned, so whether you say we're requiring it or strongly suggesting it. The people that wanna be there are gonna be there, whether they sit outside or whether they sit inside, or whether they come for their one article and leave. We will take all precautions that we can, but at the end of the day, it's a choice that people have. They have a choice to come and vote or participate, and if they don't feel comfortable, nothing we're gonna do is gonna make them more comfortable. Because even right now with masks, it can still be transferred, so. Um, but we will have that outdoor setup, we will make sure the clickers work and people can participate as best they can.
We also have it planned in case the clickers do malfunction, we still have the hand posts and we have an overflow with a moderator and the tellers and things like that. We'll, we'll have everything in place as, um, as best as possible. And as I said, we do have some masks and stuff. I have some stuff from elections. And hand wipes and hand sanitizers and things like that.
And the overflow will be the, the um cafeteria, right?
Yeah, the cafeteria, that's where we're gonna be checking in.
Cafeteria or outdoors, overflow can be outside.
Well, I'm just, I mean, just thinking. The social distancing in terms of, you know, but that's, I mean, I think that's plenty of space.
But I think the clickers last year worked the hallway.
They didn't work, um, we did find out that they didn't work all the way into the cafeteria, so they would've had to come out, so, but we've got. We've got something new that we're. Fixing that.
But that hallway, not the one leading to the gym, but the hallway outside the auditorium works, they can go in the cafeteria, they can go outside. People can mill around, I mean.
I think we got all, we got um, coverage all the way to the handicap parking space.
Yes, it was, it was, and we will, we'll sort of put cones up again and let folks know how far they can extend. I quite frankly would um, almost envision, and I, you know, we can talk to the chief, but, um. You know, once, once the sort of morning cars come in, that that front parking lot, people aren't gonna drive through, cuz I expect people to be out there. It's gonna be eighty-two degrees and sunny.
I mean, and if you, if we're ready to take a vote on us, uh, you know, and you wanna get closer, you know, just come closer and step in if you wanna. It's not shaded there, so.
But if we have tent, like pop-up tents from the fire chief, then there will be stuff that if people need to do it, so.
He has a, I don't know how many he'll bring, but we can, yeah, he had three or four, so.
So is, is, is David gonna have an assistant outside and in the cafeteria?
That I don't know.
We, we do not normally have someone in the cafeteria, we can find someone. But we won't have a microphone there, so it's not usually necessary.
Oh, you won't have?
In the, in the cafeteria, for where the checking is.
So it's not really considered overflow?
Cafeteria when we had actual card votes. Cuz you wouldn't need it for the clicker, right? But you would need it for somebody to be in there, cuz I can remember Laura Spear being in there.
Yes, and that, we did send tellers. I always had tellers assigned to the cafeteria to check to, and usually the only people in the cafeteria at the time were the. People doing the check-in, so the six, whatever people, and they would stay there for both the, the affirmative vote and the. Uh, opposed vote, and then they would come back and give it, so they added to our sheets and to our tallies.
So if, I, and I'm literally sure why I'm so interested in this. If somebody's in the cafeteria or outside and they wanna shout, hold on either the consent calendar or the budget, how would they do that? If there's no assistant?
Well, there is outside, there is. There is outside, it's my understanding that the deputy moderator would be nearby so that they can, over, just like in the past two years. They had deputy moderators outside and we had deputy moderators inside. Or an assistant moderator inside.
So, so the, the cafeteria won't be considered overflow then?
Um, we, we're gonna adjust that, I think, we'll see if.
Well, I mean, I think.
Right now, it's not a major overflow, they, they can move to the hallway, they could, you know, if, you know.
Well, it's overflow to vote. Same thing with the hallway, you can't yell ho- I mean, you could yell hold, but we might not hear you from the hallway. So the cafeteria, the hallway, they may have to stand at the back of the auditorium, um, but they can vote in the cafeteria, half of it, they can vote in the hallway.
But, I mean, pre-clickers, the definition of overflow is that there was still a mic and potentially in the assistant moderator.
Sometimes we didn't have a mic in that cafeteria.
Cuz it, it seems to me we would have, you know, someone would call up, um, you know, is there anybody who wants to ask a question in the, whatever the overflow is.
We were gonna exceed the four hundred and fifty in the.
Well, I'm, cuz what I, I originally was thinking is like, how much people will not wanna, you know, if they wanna spread out more. They have the outside.
Well, I think it's easy to set it up because it just plugs into the main sound system. I don't know, we'll ask Jonathan and we'll work on that. We'll make sure.
So, the other question I had, and actually, Denise, you actually hit on it, which was, people don't read things. And I was concerned that the Finance Committee particularly was not making a presentation. I know it's in the warrant, but people don't read stuff. And I, I, you know, it feels like we've, we've made progress on, on brevity, but um, I, I am concerned about. Not having any presentation by the Finance Committee. So, just wondering if there was any thoughts on, on that information. I mean, this is our, you know, this is our legislative body. Getting their one chance a year to hear from our committees.
I don't wanna talk about this without the finance committee.
Well, it's, it's not just the fin- I mean, I was thinking just generally, like, that that was the plan, so.
For nobody to give presentations, or are you?
I think just the articles are making, are right, is that right? Right now, the library, I don't know.
Well, so, I, I don't know, cuz since I've been here, there have been no presentations, so I don't know what other presentations you would be referring to.
Finance Committee didn't make a presentation?
Not last year.
No, not last year.
The, the year before they did, it was when Rich was doing it, and it was not so much a presentation as it was a discussion. Because it was, well, no, it was split, to be fair, it was split outside and there wasn't, half of, we were outside, the half of it was inside, it was a lot of discussion, so.
Yeah, but normally there would be a finance, um, committee would give an overview, the capital planning would give, have at least one slide to give a, a. Five minutes or, no more than ten, um, comment on the slide.
Well, I mean. Madam Chair, perhaps that's something that we can um, look forward to discussing for future town meetings, along with um, childcare.
So we will not provide childcare in the future. That's too much of a liability to the town.
I understand, no, I. But I would encourage people that are interested in it to think about ways to, to make it happen.
It's always been an option. I mean, I think that's, that's a separate topic from the idea that, that this is the one chance for, for residents to hear from committees, so. I mean, it's only been two years that we haven't had a Finance Committee presentation, and I, I missed that we didn't do it last year, so.
For what it's worth, I plan to talk to Erica about that decision. And see what her reasons are. The reason I don't wanna talk about tonight is cuz she's not here and I don't know what her reasons are. I wanna, the first thing I wanna do is talk to her about why she wants to have it that way. I do see, as a former FinCon member, I do see a benefit to having that presentation, um, and. Some recommendations. But I wanna talk to her about it.
Yeah, that's fine. I actually had forgotten, but it, it was COVID-related that we didn't have them, and that's all, so then I was surprised that we weren't having them this year. But, you're right, I mean, it's, and I did ask her and she said, well, it's in the warrant, but. I wanted to get a sense. Excuse me, I was talking. Um, I was just wanted a sense from you guys, whether you think that's something that's of value to, to town meeting going forward. I wasn't gonna like force, you know, Erica or anybody to come up with a presentation at last minute, I just.
I'm on the, I'll be honest with you, I haven't looked at like six or seven town meetings, I'm on the fence about it. I, I think the FinCon actually loses credibility. From the constant, Finance Committee recommends approval, Finance Committee recommends approval, Finance Committee recommends approval. What I had been thinking is that if they, um, simply let the recommend, the, the written recommendation speak for itself. Except for a handful, where, as I said to us, if you're gonna speak, say something, you know, have a sentence or two. Have a raison d'etre for standing up. The Finance Committee presentation, the problem there is that now the town administrator does. A budget presentation, right? You're gonna do a presentation?
At town meeting?
Not at town meeting.
I, 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 I do think there is some benefit to a financial presentation. It also acts as a showcase, frankly, for FinCon members, which has historically been. Um, a breeding ground for the Select Board, and I think not a bad one. But that's, you know, not the best reason in the world to do it, and I wanna hear what she and they have to say about why they've decided to do it differently.
I personally think that, you know, the, the presentation that Capital Planning makes is. Highly educational and, and for myself, it gives me a foundation going into. A budget discussion and a vote on the budget. And getting something similar, not redundant, from the Finance Committee would be helpful. An overview, but maybe not just a monologue. The presentation is, could be really helpful. Uh, I think Capital Planning's work is excellent in many ways. And it could be a, a valuable model.
When you were saying about the Finance Committee, you were saying, like, obviously, because it's our charter or whatever, that requires them to have a comment on every article. Is it the charter or the, the charter, but, but that they wouldn't necessarily get up at every. I, I've never been clear on which part of the charter language, do they actually have to get up to say something, or does it just have to be in the, each article?
I think it says something like, they have the opportunity to speak first and offer amendments or something like that.
Or I think, does it say they have to provide a report to town meeting, which I think they're choosing to do in written format?
But, but on the article, doesn't it say somewhere that they have to?
Yes, it says the Finance Committee shall make recommendations on all financial matters, bringing forth to town meeting, something to that effect.
Cuz I remember there was, I mean, we've had this discussion periodically, of like, why are they commenting on things that are actually not financial?
There's something they have to make a recommendation, I don't know if it says or.
So, but I, I agree that if, if they don't, I mean, only for the big ones, it would make more sense, it does.
Well, I wanna talk to her about it. And them, you know, I, 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 I do think it is time, I think she's right, it's time. To reexamine their role and how they do it, and there's, and there's nothing wrong with. Um, saying, well, it doesn't matter that we've always done it this way, let's consider something different. I, I, I wanna make sure that they haven't forgotten about something that does have some value, at least I think it has some value. And I don't wanna have this discussion even though with prolongness, even though I have prolongness without that.
No, and it's not for, not for this year, just, right.
And I, I'd like to reiterate that it's really, I think it's important to give people information in person, that's not online. And maybe that they don't have to read, because there are people that do not have easy access to online material still. And some of them come to, you know, I mean, those are people come and vote, and they shouldn't be required. To try and get on the internet if it's cumbersome for them, they should be able to get the information in a ready and easy manner at our, at our town meeting.
Well, and I, and we do have more information in this warrant than we usually have had, and that's a huge, but, you know, different learners, different styles, right? And some people just can't take it in, and especially, I mean, as a finance person, I know that some people, the minute they see a schedule or anything that looks like numbers. I just skip right over those pages, so, you know, and I, I think Denise has shown us, there's. I think the first presentation you did for us on the state of the budget was like, five minutes, and it was unbelievable, cuz it was so clear. It got to the core of what we all really should understand about, here are the big numbers that we need to understand, and that's, you know. The only things I've taken away from years of the Finance Committee presentations, you know, it's the certain excess and deficiency funds and like the different pots of money. But could I tell you sort of what the overall, you know, I, I think it's just reiterating those sort of key numbers to people every year, you know, to people. It's, I think it's, we're, we're all invested in hearing it better, but it, yes, it's the decision of the Finance Committee what they wanna do, so. I will, um, is there, I mean, I can ask David if he's got any questions for us or any comments you wanna add? David? We have stows tomorrow?
Nope, I have no questions. It sounds like, uh, everyone recommends that we strongly recommend masks, but not require. That was my main question.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, great.
I'm, I'm willing to go with that.
Um, anything else, town meeting related?
To answer Courtney's question, I plan on wearing a mask when I'm sitting there. I will probably pull it down if and when I'm speaking. Just cuz that never works out well for me.
Yes, so just on the logistics, um, so, uh, because the Finance Committee doesn't have, they've made all their recommendations with the exception of one. Um, I'm not even gonna have them at a table up the front, they can sit in the front row, um, so I'm gonna have the board all at a table, and then we'll just go. Round for the motions, does that work like it's done in the past?
I'd be grateful not to have to read them all this time.
Well, again, as I've written the town meeting articles, we just have to move really the article as written, because it's all, there's no more. All these different options written in the articles. People know going into it, whether we're raising and appropriating, borrowing or transferring, so. Most of them are just, you know, I will, you know, move to approve the article as written. Um, the bigger ones, Library, some of the CPC, um, if folks submitted articles that I didn't catch, there may be some. Um, separate motions that need to be made, but they'll be fairly simple.
I think it's really nice having a Select Board set up in front, be visible for, I mean, remember, sitting in town meeting and looking up. At the, at the town government in front of me, it just sort of feels right.
I did have one question, if I may. The two zoning articles, when I was looking at them, if they are moved as written in the warrant, what is written in the warrant includes chains bars. Do we want the change bars? Do we want the change bars to be in our zoning bylaw? If not, you're going to have to carefully, uh, it's not be in order, however you wanna do it, but you wanna carefully write your motion to probably say something other than as written in the warrant.
Right, yeah, those are one of the, those are the articles that have longer motions. Um, pretty much from like forty to on, um, because it's the CPC, the zoning, the library, so those have longer motions, so yes, we will, um, make sure that that is written appropriately.
Okay, uh, do we know when the motions will be available?
Um, hopefully tomorrow. Um, unfortunately, my staff have been, um, dealing with some medical issues amongst the two of them, so um, hopefully we'll get it wrapped up tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Anything else from you, Lengo? All right, are we, anything else on town meeting? Okay, um, so we go to minutes. Uh, we got the two sets of minutes from the last meeting, um, the special session on Masters. Any changes, comments, whatever it was. I will take a motion to.
I thought they were great.
Yeah.
Both sets?
I will move, um, to approve the, uh, six P M open session minutes for April twenty-sixth.
Second.
Um, my only question was whether we needed, because at the beginning, it just says Peter was, Masters was present, and then one other person was listed. I, wasn't there two other people from, I didn't know if it was significant or not?
Quite frankly, there was a whole bunch of people from Masters, but they didn't introduce themselves.
Okay.
So I think Joyce took, because on those recording for Zoom, you don't see all the other windows.
Right.
So the folks that actually introduced themselves, she included their name.
Okay, all right. All right, any other comments? So there's no changes, as far as I'm concerned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. And then the second set?
Um, I will move the, um, regular open session minutes for April twenty-sixth. Ezra?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Great. Um, and correspondence? There was just the one letter. I was told there was more letters, so that's why I had asked Joyce to include more, but I guess.
No, and, and I will say Joyce apologized because she was not feeling well last week and just missed it. She responded that it would be included, and she felt awful when she realized it was not in the packet, so.
I think a lot of us got it separately.
Oh, I, I don't, but that is the only one that's come into either one of us.
Right, okay. Um, any comments on that? I think we already covered that.
Oh, I had a question on the correspondence that was sent to us.
Okay.
Um, who, whose testimony was this?
You'd have to be more specific.
No, it was, um, there was like a thing included citing the flaws in the draft compliance guidelines for multifamily district zoning.
So that was from the, I believe, the municipal town council association. And that was what they were putting together in response to the MBTA community legislation.
Okay.
Okay, that was great. And the planning board letter?
Yeah, the planning board letter, I, yeah, I liked. I just didn't know who the people were.
The Municipal Lawyers Association, Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association.
Okay. Anything else?
Um.
So much in here. Okay, I think, are we ready?
Yeah.
Jim, it's your last chance.
Aye. Oh, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate the kind words.